Connection is a little bit unstable, but we are on business. Welcome everybody, welcome Irina, Miltos and all our guests. I mute myself, you have the honour.
Okay, so good morning, so glad to have Miltos here. I was tempted to start like, "Good morning", but not Vietnam, but Miltos and all the others from the intergalactic, yes, yes, yes. For this galactic imaginaryum, because you have to have a lot of imagination to succeed to such a festival, especially in such a complicated period of time. But you know, on our planet's time, it's not the same as everywhere else. I think for us, cinema lovers and cinema goers, I think it's something totally different. So thank you so much for having you today with us. I'm very happy that we have the possibility to ask you as many questions as we can. And I would start by asking you if you have, at the very beginning, it was theatre or cinema? And if you used also your power of sword in theatre?
So I guess I've always been influenced by film. So film is like my first love. And that is because when I was a child, when I was very young, my father had a restaurant in the UK. When they came to the UK, they had a restaurant. And as if by magic, my father is calling me just as I mention his name.
You see?
So I'm just going to have to tell him to go away.
No, you can answer, it's funny.
No, I just held it. It's fine, it's fine, because it will be, it will be the weekly telephone call. They always call me on Sunday mornings.
Sunday morning call, okay.
Yeah, as soon as I mentioned my father, he called.
Yeah, yeah, it's always, yes, it's a nice coincidence, what it's called, a sweet coincidence, yes.
He used to take me, when he used to finish lunch, the shift at lunchtime, we would go to the cinema in the afternoons between, for those three hours. And...
It was a sort of a martini, like in the theatre.
Yeah, and we would go and see Bruce Lee films. I remember, I think I was like seven or eight, and he took me to see The Big Boss, which was an X, was it an X in those times, which was completely, I'm sure, illegal. I mean, it's only martial arts. When you look back on those movies, you know, you'd never get an X rating now for a bit of fisticuffs, would you? In any country, censorship and classifications. So that felt, but that was my first experience of martial arts. And of course, as a seven-year-old, it was really...
So it was again a fight, it wasn't with swords so much?
No, but to me, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
You know, using weapons and not using weapons, the principles of the choreography and the principles of the fight are always the same. So that was my starting point, my very first starting point. But my exposure to theatre was, of course, the first thing that happened at school. And I wasn't very academic, I didn't really enjoy school. I was one of those kids that just didn't, you know, so many kids, they love going to school, they love going to see their friends.
And teachers sometimes, it depends on the teacher.
Yeah, the lex, they love, they love all of those things, but I hated it. I really was miserable. I was a very quiet kid, I was very solitary. I have a sister, but I learnt very quickly to kind of look after myself. So school was a bit of a problem for me. But when I did find a way of making connection with school was through theatre plays. And as soon as I discovered that, everything changed. And I really, really enjoyed that. I would become obsessed by it. I was obsessed with my theatre days when I was a student. I don't think I was very good, to be honest, but, but, but I was very enthusiastic. I was really, you know, I really loved it. I wouldn't socialise with my friends, but I would always go to my rehearsals after school and stuff like that, you know, so that's, that was really where I, where I came from. So theatre was an easy thing for me to get into. And I went and studied it as a degree at university or polytechnic in those days.
Like Simona, okay.
Yeah, and it was a great course and exposed me to theatre from all over the world, which if I, if I had, if I'd gone to a drama school, you know, an established drama school in the UK, I would have learnt a lot and got a great agent and had a very different career. But, but I, the course I did was fantastic, because it was run by a man whose speciality, even though he was British, his speciality was in Eastern European theatre. And at the time, so this is the beginning of the 90s, we had amazing theatre companies, companies that came from Romania, from Poland...
The National Theatre from Romania travelled a lot.
The most amazing theatre shows that we had never seen before in our lives. Literally as an 18-year-old, it blew my mind and changed the trajectory of where I wanted to go, especially in theatre. So with the theatre, I was much more interested in experimental avant-garde. I was interested in what makes a theatre performance. And so for a long time, when I first started acting, I was devising and creating shows, collaborating with other actors and creating things from scratch, usually influenced by theatre companies like DV8 and kind of like very kind of like high-class movement, physical theatre, dance. You know, that was really where I, where I was at my happiest, using my body. So that, of course, then led me to dance. And then that led me to choreography and that led me to fight choreography. And so these, these things were all connected, but they all started in, in my love of being very physical. So that was for a long time, a huge part of my life. And because I didn't really have a very good agent, I couldn't really get any good castings on TV and film. The way that the system is run in this country is that, in the UK, is that, is that usually casting directors...
Not only.
Not only, yeah, of course. Casting directors will have their, their favourite agents that they will always use, because most agents have, you know, the typical breakdown of, of every kind of constituent that you might want in casting. A good, a good agency will have that, so they can cover the bases. So it was very difficult for me to get any telly work, but, but I did bits and pieces here and there. But really doing Game of Thrones and getting a new agent, I changed my agent. And then I got a great agent and then...
Is it he or is she?
She, she and he, they're a partnership, Bloomfield's Welsh. They, they're really fantastic. They look after me like, like family as well, which is a nice thing. Usually sometimes this can be a bit like professional, but they're fantastic agents, but they, I have so much respect for them. They, they got me an audition for Game of Thrones within about a month. And then, of course, I got the job. And then, of course, I got to work with the amazing William Hobbs and the rest is history. And so, so that's how I came to what I do in theatre and film and where the connection with the fighting comes from. The reason I got Game of Thrones is because I did actually have experience and the experience came from 10 years working at the Royal Shakespeare Company. And of course, there's lots of fights, especially with blades and swords in Shakespeare. So, so I got to work with some fantastic fight choreographers there. And I learnt I had a natural aptitude for that kind of stuff. You know, I'm lucky, because my brain processes that kind of information quite well, so that I can, if you show me some moves, I can replicate them without too much difficulty.
But do you need also to be quite good in following music in order to be, in order to do this kind of choreography? I mean, with swords and so on, or not at all?
So I've noticed when I've worked with other people, is, is that, I'm watching fight choreographers work with different actors, is that everyone responds to different things? Like, for example, if I, if I approach trying to learn choreography by overthinking it, for example, some people write it down, like they plot it, like, 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 like you just write down the moves. And you write them down and you, and you go through them, because you see them, you know, in your, in your, on your, on your piece of paper. And you practise them a little bit at a time and you remind yourself what you're doing, because it's written down. I can't do that. I literally have to do the move, but by doing the move physically, I seem to be able to imprint it in my memory. So it's just, it's one, it's just one of those things. I'm very bad at many other mental exercises, very bad. Don't even get me, no, don't even get me started on mathematics. I'm terrible at it. But for some reason, I can visualise, I can, I think this, I don't think it's called, I don't think I have anything close to like a photographic memory, but I remember patterns, because I can see them.
So I can watch... Have you done your blood?
Maybe, but you know, I can watch, I can watch a choreographer and I can just ingest it, like I can learn it almost immediately, for some reason, and I can't explain it. But I know that other people, what they do need is they need to practise it, they need to break it down, they need to do a little bit of it, a little bit more. And I just find that everyone has a different way of approaching it. For me, I just have to do it. And it's the same with acting. I can go home and I can learn a script and I can practise it with another actor sitting here. And I will know the lines. And as soon as you stand me up and then make me have to do the acting, like literally emoting, I forget everything, forget everything, can't do the two things. I have to rehearse and learn my lines at the same time. If I learn my lines in connection to what I'm doing emotionally and physically, for some reason, it goes in much quicker.
I see.
I have, I have a question related to that. Okay, I have a question related to what you said. I was talking last year at the Comic Con with the Night King, with Vladimir Fordyk.
Okay.
And asked him about the input of an actor in his act. His input is small or big, related to the director's instructions. He said that he follows the director's instructions and the script. What about choreography? How is your relation with the director in...
Very good, that's a really good question, because, you know, I remember the very first day on Game of Thrones for me, I was going to do the very first lesson, the very first lesson with Arya Stark, when she meets Cireo for the first time. And I remember that was a scene I auditioned and I had to do it five times. That was the first thing I learnt, is the three and a half minute scene. And I had to just show that to producers and directors and casting agents. And we did it over and over again. So I knew that scene pretty well. But, but the reality is, is that you're terrified. First of all, you're terrified. We make it look easy, we make it look like we know what we're doing, but inside, I'm like terrified. I'm, I'm going on to set on a, on a, on a big show. I have a couple of scenes, I have three scenes, and I have to make an impression. And these pressures, you know, you hope that you're going to do it right. You hope it's not just about remembering your lines, you have to learn, remember the choreography. And it took us three days to film that one scene, three and a half minutes long. Took us three days, because they really wanted it to get it right. We used, you know, so many different ways of filming it too. So I, I, I remember me and Maisie going through the choreography that we had cooked up with William in London. And the directors didn't really tell us anything. David and Dan and the director of the episode said to me, "That's fantastic." I'm so sorry, I don't, I don't know what's just happened. Something's happened to my...
I think it's your phone, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, a piece of software's just opened itself up and won't go away. And it's now doing...
The fridge is open.
I can see it, yeah, hello. So they didn't really say anything to me. They said to me, and I asked them, just before I shot the scene, the very first scene, I said to them, "How do I pronounce the word bravosi? How do I pronounce, how do I, do you want me to be more flamboyant? Or do you want me to make him much smaller, quieter character?" And David and Dan just said to me, "Look, just do it the way you did it for the audition, because that's the reason why we cast you. Don't overthink it, don't worry too much about it. We cast you for a reason, we trust you, just go out there and just enjoy yourself." That's the only direction I got.
That's it. So just be yourself is just enough.
That depends on the director, other people are really precise. Like I worked with a director who kept making me do the scene over and over and over again until it was perfect. And I didn't even know what the difference was. So it always depends on the creative person and every creative person is different. You've met creative obsessives. You know, I think I can be a little bit like that when I'm a director. I can ask a lot of my, of my actors, but that's because I expect to be treated like that too, so...
Thank you, Miltos.
Okay. Feel free to ask questions.
May I ask you a question? Yes, Miltos, I'd like to, I'd like to ask you about the accent you used in Game of Thrones.
Yeah, well, my accent...
Were you instructed to use that or was it your idea? Or what did that mean to you to put up an accent?
So in the breakdown that the casting director Nina Gold sent, it said that he was a foreigner. So he's a different type of person to the other people you meet in this world. That was the most important thing about him, is that he was different. In the books, I think I mentioned this yesterday, in the books, Cireo is described as very slight, very small, very slight, much older than me, like in his 70s and 60s, you know, and bald, no hair whatsoever, and a big nose, big hook nose. And for many months, we talked about me being bald. And of course, I said yes, because as I mentioned yesterday, I love dressing. My whole, my, my whole reason for acting is to not be myself. And so I, I was, I jumped at the chance, I said, "Yeah, if you want to shave my hair off, I'm happy to do that." But then George R.R. Martin got, got involved and he said, "No, you don't need to shave his head. His, the way he looks is exotic or different enough. He will look different to, you know, Sean Bean and Robert, Robert Baratheon and, you know, those people, the long-haired hairy people. I was not like that, you know." So, so first of all, physically, the description is very, very different. But he was very clear that he was different. So yeah, so, so they wanted me to try, and this is also the reason why they gave me the role, because they knew that I was Greek Cypriot. They knew that I have a long tradition of playing foreigners. I play, I mean, that's all I really do, I just, you know, I play French people, Italian people, you name it, that's who, you know, whatever.
Romanian, any Romanian.
I haven't done Romanian yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
So, so, so my natural starting point is always to do an impersonation of my dad. So, so that's where it began, the voice. The voice began with me doing an impersonation of my papa. And then I realised that I needed it to be something that wasn't, that, I didn't want it to be specific. Oh my God, he's crying so much, I'm just going to have to get this...
Take it in your arms.
I'm not going to take him in my arms, I'm just going to get the ball, it's the ball, he puts it under the... Oh God, can't get this off. I should have someone looking after the dog right now, but because we're living in a pandemic, no one's allowed into my house. I, I, where was I? I was talking about the accent.
Your dad.
I didn't want it to be specific, I didn't want you to be able to recognise it and go, "Oh, that's Spanish or that's Italian or that's Greek." So I, I created that voice, started with my dad's, my, doing the impersonation of my dad, and then just pushed it further east, so it was more like Middle Eastern. That's why I was, sometimes I listen to it and I just think, "Oh my God, it was, it's awful." I over, over-roll my Rs so much that I think it's just, it's too much. And I think, I mean, remember, that's like 10 years ago now. And it's amazing how much you change as an actor, even in 10 years. I've become, when I first started, I was very, not very subtle at all. I was a very, I was always being told by directors, "Make it smaller, make it smaller." And now they're telling me to make it bigger, because I've just become a very different actor. I think this is what happens. I think we get older and we kind of find this level of confidence or understanding that we just don't, we don't have for most of our careers. That's why when you, when, if you're lucky enough to be an old actor, I think that's when you're at your peak. So I'm looking forward to my retirement.
Did you have a coach also for your accent or just by yourself?
No, I didn't, I didn't get, usually you do have a coach.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, usually I always have someone to help me with my accent, but I didn't this time.
And what about your father? Did he recognise himself in your accent?
Yes, a little bit, it's hard to know really. My dad is the kind of person that doesn't really pay attention to things like that. I remember when I first did, did the show and I, and the DVD came out of the first season. And I, and I bought it for my parents, because they'd never seen it. You know, they, they don't have internet or anything like that. They don't even have a TV subscription, they just watch the telly as it is. And they, they had, I gave them the DVD and I even had to buy them a DVD player, because, because they didn't even have a DVD player. And they never watched it, they didn't plug it. My parents have a love-hate relationship with my career. They would much rather I was a teacher and had a steady job and had a family with children and all the things that go with that. But unfortunately, I was never going to give them that. So, so, so...
But I think you are a very good teacher, believe me.
Ah, thank you. But I, but they, they said, they, they didn't watch the show until it started being screaming, screened on terrestrial Cypriot television. And what the village does is that they all go outside and they sit in the, in the open-air cafes and they watch the football on the big TV outside. And everyone sits outside, has their coffee and watches the football. But when Game of Thrones was on, every Sunday night, they would screen the episode on the big screen. So, so my dad is sitting there watching this TV show, completely unaware that I'm in it, even though I've told him about it. And then he, and everyone's like, "Roger, is that your son?" And I'm like, and he's like, "Oh my God, it's my boy." And this is, and that's literally my dad. And my dad became a celebrity overnight because of me being at a TV show. This is like three years after I told him I was in it.
It takes time.
Oh, so you know, that's, that's, that was it. But to go back to your question, I'm terrible at answering questions, have you noticed that? I always go off in lots of directions.
But it's nicer like that.
Yeah, so I, I, I didn't have a coach, I just, I remember when I met David and Dan and the head honcho at HBO, when they all came to London to meet me, this was the final audition. This is where I really crapped myself, because I realised that I was this close to getting it. Up till then, I was not, I was dismissive, I was like, "I'm never going to get it, forget it, they're going to give it to Ben Kingsley, it's fine." And, and then they, they, they asked me to do the scene that I told you in the first lesson in lots of different accents. I did it in British, I did it in, in the accent we ended up with, I did it in kind of like a gruff Greek accent, I did it in Spanish, did it in Italian. They did it in all these different voices for them to see. And then eventually, they just settled with the one that they said, "The thing that comes more naturally to you is the, is the most natural."
Any more questions? If not, I have a whole list.
I have one. Miltos, have you ever lent your voice to an animated character?
Only in the, only, only once on a game for PlayStation official, it was the official Lord of the Rings PlayStation game. And I got to voice Gollum. So I did the voice of Gollum. But if you play those old games that came out just after the films came out, they are, when you play Gollum, that's my voice. And I lost my voice for three days after doing that. I was in a studio doing that voice and doing all the, you know, climbing up mountains and falling for hours and hours. So that was exciting. I'd love to do more, but the trouble is in this country, if you want to be a voice actor, you have to just be a voice actor. Very hard. I mean, everyone wants to be a voiceover now, because no one's got any other work to do. I just narrated a book by a short novella, which I can send you a link to, a narrated, like an audiobook. I did it myself, it's a little bit ropey, but I recorded it in my own flat using my own software. But the writer has written this beautiful fantasy book. It's called The Tower of Mud and Straw, and it's really, really good. It's not your typical dragons and knights, but it is intriguing and surprising and very poetic. It's a very beautiful Russian writer, a young Russian writer. I will find a link and send it to you, so you could share it, because it's good. It's only just come out. They're doing it as a podcast, so they're doing it like a four-part podcast, so you can hear it on that.
I want to ask, if it's possible, hello, hello.
Hello, my friend.
I didn't sleep at night, because I'm, I'm thinking how to work today. And I'm training myself, you know, they give me an entire fall here.
I can't believe you've got all that space.
Yeah, what's, you know, it's a craziness. It would be so beautiful if we are together here, but we'll see. I wanted to ask you, how hard it was for you to learn the accents? Because it is, as I know, in LA, because I have friends, some friends there, they said, "It is most expensive to have a dialogue teacher than an acting teacher, because it is so important."
Especially for LA actors now. I mean, in fact, British actors, you think about British actors, we, I mean, I think we're employed because we can do accents. I don't think you'll ever get employed as a British actor if you can't do a convincing American accent anymore. Actors used to get away with it all the time, but not, not anymore. But, well, as I said, just, just... But, um, well, as I said, just, just a minute ago, I, I kind of found. I've been lucky enough to work with voice, the dialect coaches and they've been really good and they've really helped me and, and. Uh, they're invaluable because you think you're, for example, there was an episode of The Crown that I did. And I had to speak in Greek, had to be just in Greek. Yes. But the difference is, is that I don't speak Greek like an Athenian.
Yes.
I speak Greek like my dad and his generation. Uh, spoke Greek and Turkish. So the, the dialect that I learnt just phonetically from my parents. Betrays that I, my age. Because they look at me and they go, how would you sound like an old man? You'd speak Greek like an old man. Because, because when my parents, you know, living in a, in a, in a village in Cyprus before the war. They had, you know, they lived in a village with half of the people were Turkish. So. The, the Turkish language and the Greek language used to mingle quite a lot. And so my dad learnt his Greek in a, in a slightly different phonetic to like a mainland Athenian. So I had to learn how to speak Greek like an Athenian and I had kind of tell you how difficult it was. It was so difficult because I was already na- naturalised. To speak in Greek words within a certain way. And then the woman would stop me and go. That's kind of not how you pronounce that word. No, I've been saying that word for all my life. So, but these things that you learn to unlearn them are the hardest. When you're doing a brand new accent, it's kind of a little bit easier. And remember, I was making it up. So as I, as I said, I, I, I made it much more like my father. I, it was much more closer to my roots than, than having to be really specific. But when you're specific, it's too difficult.
I know because I have, I don't know if maybe you, you, you keep it Sandy Low. It, it was one of the best teachers in languages from, from London. Uh, he was, I met him, I had the pleasure to meet him in the film of Costa Gabras, which is Greek like you.
Yeah, yeah.
He said about this kind of accents, which they are different from a part to another, from a time to another.
Yeah.
So Sandy had the, the knowledge about the English, of course, about French, about Russian. About even Greek. And when he talked with the actors, because in, in the film of Costa, and Italian either. Uh, in the film of Costa Gabras, they need to have Italians, Germans, Russians, Austrians. Which are different than the Germans, you know, they have different kinds of speech, idish in the same. So Sandy said, that is, and they, they, I cannot say exactly academical that word. But they ask you to say exactly the word in the, exactly definition. So you as actor, you know very well that. To make, you should think at your character. You should think at the period. You should think about the situation, to have certain lines and certain signs on set. And the set time to have that word exactly, you know, exactly spoken for. So it is extremely hard for that.
It's really hard. There is no doubt, there is no doubt. It's really difficult because. It gets in the way of the acting and, and unless you can be so confident and you have assimilated it so much. It, you will, it will kind of distract you. That's the thing. Just give me one second. Just dealing with the dog. And it will distract you, but, but what's really interesting is, is for that, for that thing about, I did a Russian accent on, in a play once. And my dialect coach kept saying to me, every time you speak your lines, you sound Ukrainian. It's not bad because at least it's close. But they said, but it's not Russian.
Yeah, he's against the Russian thing, yeah.
So.
Have you seen the, the recent, have you seen Tenet or not?
No, I haven't seen it yet, no.
Yeah, because there is an accent of Kenneth Branagh in there.
Oh, yeah.
Funny accent, Russian accent. As funny as the one of Hercule Poirot in.
Yes, of course, the Belgian.
Mother on Orient Express. Yes, yes. It's funny. I don't think it's very convincing, that's why.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
We will have another five, eight minutes if there are any questions. Sorry, I'm the beggar here. With the time.
I like a timekeeper. I'm very happy about timekeepers. Do you know, um, you know, I, I had a very small part in that remake that he made. Uh, and I remember doing that scene where we're clo, you know, we're hugging. And he, and I remember him looking at me because we had to stay in that position for a long time. While they were making some adjustments with the character and we were embracing each other like this, sort of face to face. And his moustache, you saw how big it was. I, I whispered while we were waiting, I said, that's a very impressive moustache. And he said to me, he said. You know, it has its own trailer. He's a very funny man and he's a very, very talented man. I could not believe watching him on set. I could not believe him turning up, doing his acting, then going behind the camera, telling people what to do. And then going back, I mean, how, how this man does it, I don't know.
But A Winter's Tale was in his theatre or in Royal Shakespeare?
It was at Royal Shakespeare Theatre.
Because I, I, I've seen it in, in his theatre in London with Dame Judi Dance and him, yeah.
Yes, yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, it was wonderful also, yeah.
It's a great play. I like it. I like, I like the first part of the play. I don't like the second part so much.
Yeah.
The ending's great, of course, when, when she comes alive. It's beautiful. We did, we did a beautiful production of it in.
The catering was very nice. It was quite an idea, yeah.
Maybe Louis wants to appear on our screen, so.
He doesn't want to appear. All he wants is his ball. If I picked him up now, he'd cry in my face. He's, he's now nudging me. He's desperately trying to get me to get the ball.
Yeah, the attention, that's the idea.
So much, so naughty. Come here, come here.
Come here.
I have a request, Miltos.
Sorry, hello.
Can you please do the line with the god of death? For all the fans who, who would love to hear you say it.
Okay, we're gonna do it. We have to do the, the lines properly, okay? So you have to play Arya Stark, okay? So I'm gonna ask you, do you believe in the gods? And you say, yes, the old and the new. And then I say, there is only one god. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do you believe in the gods?
The old and the new.
There is only one god and his name is death. And there is only one thing we say to the god of death. Not today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Eliza. Thank you, Miltos.
Thank you.
So, we'll meet again.
We can seamlessly just go into our next meeting.
Yes, I. I will stop the recording of this one and we can stay here at, to Alpha Co. We'll begin our sword choreography with Florinke Volkan and Miltos. So stay tuned.
So I wanted to ask you, oh, stop the recording and then I'll ask your question.
Okay, just a moment.